When the district was formed, it was formed on the premise that there would be advisory committees, five advisory committees spread out throughout the district to represent the entire district. And the only advisory board that remained was within the city of Milwaukee. And then the district advisory board, which is separate, people were just applied for and really didn't have a, some had a connection to the community. Many did not, and especially in the latter years. So the subareas dissolved or apparently dissolved. And what we've been fighting with for the last several years is really, and we've tried, I've tried. I'm the liaison for the Parks District. So I'm not here to advocate for what's here today. I've been very careful to be somewhat neutral, but all I'm happy to explain some of this. So we've had a huge challenge in trying to get people that were on the district advisory board committee. It was a board, the bylaws changed, now we call it a district advisory committee. To get those people to be engaged with the local CPOs or with anything as far as public involvement, to make sure they were doing their best to connect and bring issues forward. And because we didn't have that, Milwaukee has done a marvelous job. So I have no, this is nothing negative towards Milwaukee at all. As a matter of fact, it's, you know, they ought to be flattered with what they've done and pleased with what they've done. But so, so this, in the last year or so, we've been working on the bylaws and we finally came to an agreement on the bylaws. And the city of Milwaukee was very adamant that we made sure we had geographic representation. So they were concerned that they didn't want all of the members from the unincorporated area to come from one spot. Let's just say Oak Lodge, that was their word. So that was what the city council had discussed. So we went back to the drawing board and we came up with a subarea map that had divided up the district into basically equal populations of about 20 some odd thousand per subarea, making up about 100, about 100,000 folks between the five, five times 20,000 is 100,000. And Milwaukee is 20,000 of that. And then we have the other four subareas that form that. So the goal here is, is that the task right now is that what you have before you is a mechanism in which they can actually recruit. They would temporarily form in some degree, it would say temporarily, but they would at least initially form as these subareas, they have people already involved. And they would, we would do a last call out for applicants that are interested because there is a new role, there's a representative role. And essentially, we, the staff, our NCPRD staff and the volunteers that are active, task force members included, would review the applications and then submit the names that they felt best represented or were convinced that they would be representative of their area and work with the CPOs. And they would, and they would be forwarded to the board of the NCPRD, the Board of Commissioners, and ultimately be appointed to the district advisory committee. And then from there forward, they would be, they would be feedback between those representatives and the subareas with the premise that there'd be very little to, no staff support required from the district thereafter. Really, the staff involvement would just be making sure that the voting and the whole process of nominating folks is done according to this plan. So the task force worked really hard in the last 30 days. I know they've worked substantial hours. So, you know, I think they've got a pretty, appears to be a pretty good plan here. So if I can answer any other questions, that's my quick overview.
Are there any other questions for Commissioner Savas before we begin?
I just don't.
Go ahead, Rick.
Just, I noticed in there it said Milwaukee had an IGA of some sort in the.
Yeah, the IGA was part of the formation of the district. And so that's just integral with the district right now. So because the, because the district owns their parkland, it makes them unique where the district doesn't own the parkland. And so they have some investments and assets in which they want to be assured are maintained at a certain level and so on.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Savas, did you, so did you look over the recommendations for the selection process then that the task force put out to us here?
Yeah, I reviewed it. I have been very, very busy, so I haven't gone over it, you know, that many times. You know, there's several pages there, but yeah, I'm familiar with it.
Okay. Because I think we'll, we'll probably talk about that. Jerry's got a couple of questions, I've got a couple of questions. And really, they put together, it's very, it's put together very well, I have to say.
Yeah, and one point of reference, if you choose, the people, one of the persons that's, I don't know who's all in the audience. I can't see from here, which is fine, no worries. But the one person who's been putting in the most amount of hours is most familiar with this. It has the most amount of detail and can explain it thoroughly is in the audience. I'm understanding he is, and his name's Grover. So if I can't, I might not be the best resource, but he might be able to give you the detail. He's intimately knowledgeable of this document.
All right, any other questions? Oh, Lori?
Yeah, so Paul, when you think about this group, I was thinking about another, just sort of had another thought about it. It would make it be a little different, perhaps, I'm not sure. And maybe it doesn't fit for what everybody wants, you know, I don't know that. But this sounds difficult to me. I'm being kind of blunt there, but in terms of having gone through experiences asking for people to apply and interview and go through all those things, number one, getting somebody to apply is a big deal. And if they've had, already had experience with that pattern of getting people on board, whether they've had experience in asking for applications, you know, how successful do they feel they've been with that? And the reason I'm asking is, so here's another shape to it, would be if a person connected to the cities, whatever they call themselves, whether they're counselors or whatever, a specific position on the, on the city's board and also a specific position on the CPO boards, whether it be the president or the vice president or whatever, and just tagging them as being on the board of this. And that, for the most part, covers the area. And then maybe even have a representative from the police department because the things that go on, you know, in the parks. And the reason I'm thinking that is that the people that are in the CPOs and in the city have a handle on kind of what's up on many different corners of the world. And maybe that would be helpful in terms of bringing that to the table for the parks. I know that's kind of a different idea and stuff, but then it, it may be not quite that idea, but something like that, something that takes away asking for applicants, because I think that's tough. You know, now maybe their experience has been different with that, I just plain don't know.
Yeah, I'm happy to respond, Lori, thank you for the question. I will say that we, this is what we actually worked on quite a bit as the district advisory committee in our role of crafting the minutes, not the minutes, but the bylaws. And the challenge was, was that there's not equally populated CPOs. That's problem number one. Number two, there's areas that are pretty, I won't say, activity wise, that are just basically, just nothing's out there. So we struggled. The good news is, is that because of our efforts and because of the op eds and so forth, we've had a lot more involvement. When we did the applications, we got 20 applicants. So that's a record number for NCPRD. Mr. Bornfeld and others with Jenny's Lodge CPO and Oak Lodge CPO circulated a petition. We got several hundred, well, a couple hundred, at least a couple hundred signatures on that. So we've got, they've got a base and you add that with the CPO base and we're working with other, they are working with up for other CPOs currently, but it doesn't really, representation wise, there's still work to do. And they have, so the involvement piece is, is good at this point. And, and you know, frankly, I can tell you that some of the CPO members are pretty stressed out just trying to time wise, find the time to just manage their own CPO. So it probably put an undue burden upon the CPO members. And I can just tell you, because I know what's happening at both CPOs. This is my, happens to be in my backyard, so I know the, I know the challenge is pretty well here. The other thing I will tell you is that they, as going forward, I think they have a goal of, as this evolves and once this, applications are all done and we got the DAB is, or the DAC is fully formed, that going forward, they wish to incorporate more efforts to kind of streamline this even better. So this is just to get us going. This is like priming the pump. And I expect quite a few refinements, from what I'm hearing from them, and actually put a structure on it. And that structure, Lori, that you know this pretty well, could look a lot like C4. And you know, C4 covers a lot of geography. So that, that could be a model in which that representative role or subcommittees, hence, i.e. would be subarea committees, could be a model in which is adopted going forward. But their task, their work right now was focused on just trying to get the DAC formed. But we have activity, we have the people and they're interested. They're obviously very capable and they are, many of them, if not most of them, are involved in CPOs right now in a very evenly distributed way, as best as reasonably possible, if that helps.
If you. Hey, if you.
I'm sorry, Lori.
Let's finish this little idea up. But if you, as you bring up the idea of C4 and you think about what the members of C4 consist of, and it's just sort of basically what I just talked about in terms of people that are counselors in different cities and and people coming in from other interests. So I, you know, I see, I see that. And, and you know, think about that C4 thing because population wise, you know, they're just going by cities and then they have the hamlets and the CPOs. So they are not necessarily doing population, evening, evening up the population to represent different areas. They are using another outlook on it. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, it's more, it would potentially be like a mini C4 is what it really would be. And we've already dropped, the map has already been approved. The city of Milwaukee approved the map and the map's already drawn up. So we know geographically what the areas are and the population's already divvied up. So a lot of the work's been done, a lot of the thought's gone into this. So, and there's, you know, the commissioners, the staff, the district, all of us are very anxious to get, get, get this DAC formed as quickly as possible. So a lot of time went into just getting us here. So I think there's opportunity going forward, once we get past this, when the DAC is formed, to, to better refine the operation and the involvement further. And maybe CCI could be a partner in that as well.
Barb, did you have something?
Yeah, I read the document and it's certainly a very comprehensive and well thought out document. And obviously, a lot of time was spent on it, it's apparent of that. I, I'm just thinking about after listening to what Lori was saying and Commissioner Savas in terms of, you know, having volunteers and having CPO folks, which is great, because I think one of the issues that has always been a hurdle is to get volunteers, whether it's for CPOs or advisory boards and commissions. We know how difficult it is to get applicants. So the fact that there's sort of, as Paul said, the pump has been primed, that's a good thing. I guess my question would be oftentimes, the, those that apply or are interested are the same folks that apply to a number of things. They're very involved people and that's great. But I think we need to reach out to those folks that typically haven't been involved. And when you're talking about a park or a park district, many different people use parks. So it's not a specific, you're not, you know, tied to one CPO or, or one interest, but parks are used by everybody pretty much. So I guess my, my question or my concern would be, how do you or how do we get folks that typically are not the same folks? And not that there's anything wrong with having individuals who certainly are generous with their time. But in looking at the, I'm just looking at the roles and responsibilities of the, of the DAC. And it's daunting, quite frankly. And so I'm wondering if that kind of is a self-defeating portion of it because folks that maybe typically haven't been participating as volunteers would look at that and be a little reticent to join this committee or to even apply. And also the time commitment, as we know, is important. And, and I think you want folks that are involved, but also have other interests and they have families and jobs and perhaps other volunteer groups. So I guess that would be something to think about. And then on the other side of that, just in reading the document, and again, it was so well put together. I'm just very impressed by it. On a number of pages, it mentions that very little staff time would be required for the DAC. But just in reading through it, it looks like there would be quite a bit of staff time, especially in the early stages. But even throughout in terms of applications coming in and technology services having to help with the Zoom and GIS having to, you know, delineate population areas where the subareas are. So I guess those would be my two comments on the document, which again, I think is just really well put together. But those are my thoughts, just off the top of my head.
Yeah, sure, Barb, I know your background, Barb, so I know you've been, your, your career.
You know my background, that's scary.
Well, no, I know you've been, been involved with PGA and the CPOs for a long, long time prior to retirement. So thanks for your service. I do want to just say that the inspiring aspect of this that you kind of touched on is that there's a lot of new faces, people I don't even know, a lot, most of the applicants, I don't even recognize, I don't even recognize the names. So that's good. A lot of people that were involved with this task force, I never even knew until they signed up for the task force. And I still don't know them because I haven't even met them yet. They've been meeting amongst themselves. So, so that part is refreshing. And, and if, you know, I, the work for the GIS, most of that's virtually already been done. So again, the maps and the, and the population, a lot of the work's already been done on the premise of a model like this. So fortunately, once the, once the folks are appointed, a majority of the staff time is, is, will be, will be diminished, be minimal.
Thanks, Paul.
Welcome.
Okay, so do we want to, do we have any more questions? Or do we want to dive into reviewing the document together? Okay.
I'll go through the document, questions may crop up along the way.
Sure. Commissioner Savas, thank you so much for the background information.
You're all welcome.
Okay. Oh, I hit the wrong button, I apologize. Here we go. Okay, can everyone see that? Would you like me to make the screen bigger?
It's big.
Okay.
Star Wars big.
Yay. So I do wanted to say that the downside of sharing screens is that I can't see as many of you all at the same time. So if you just, just please feel comfortable to chime in as we go. And the way I thought I would do this is to just use post-its to, or comments so that I don't flub up the, the text too much and I'll clean it up afterwards. If that's, if everyone's okay with that. So I think Commissioner Savas kind of went through what the background was. Is there anything that, anything here that anyone wanted to ask any questions? Or need any clarity in the background section? Okay, silence, I'm taking silence to mean no. Okay. Critical success factors. If, did everyone get a chance to read through this or is it helpful if I read the section?
I read it.
I read it.
Everyone read it? Okay, okay, I don't want to waste our time reading it if it's already been read, but I just wanted to offer if someone didn't have the opportunity.
Mine didn't come through.
Are there any comments here, question? Oh, Lori, would you like me to quickly read through it?
It holds everybody up, I'll just.
Okay, okay.
I think Paul kind of covered this too, you know, with his explanation on.
I thought so too.
I think I would make the expanding community engagement requires time and trust building involved. Kind of joking, but anyhow.
It is a lot of.
Where was that, Jerry?
Next to the bottom paragraph, the bottom of the, next to bottom paragraph, "Expanding community engagement requires time and trust building."
Oh, this here. It is a time-consuming process, you're absolutely right, Jerry. The one thing I noticed here, just from what, to be consistent with what the committee recommends, is we have made a commitment as CCI to be really careful how we use the term citizen. And so I didn't know if we wanted to just briefly make the recommendation that we usually convert the word citizen unless we are specifically talking about someone who needs to have US citizenship for a specific need, for a service, that we use community member or community involvement, however, is the most appropriate for the circumstance with the committee like need to make that edit in our recommendation.
I would say yes.
I've already changed it on page four when we get.
Okay, okay. I just know that that, that's something we've talked quite a bit about. So I just wanted to offer to make that simple edit and to be more inclusive.
Katie, on page two, sorry, under the need to, real estate expectations is process of, where it says, without acknowledging about the third line down, actually, it would be the fourth line down. End of that is unlikely to be, that didn't make sense to me.
Okay, without acknowledging the difficulty and magnitude of the work that will be needed, any process, including one recommended in this document, is unlikely to be.
Successful.
Is unlikely to succeed, so yeah.
I wasn't sure if I had missed something or if it got chopped off when I printed it out, so, okay.
To succeed.
Boy, I'm sure glad he's not reading all of my emails I send.
He's a retired teacher.
Yeah, that's a good catch.
Thank you, Mr. Cook.
Certainly.
Is there any other comments in this area? Okay. Recognizing the challenges and providing support to the subarea representatives and the need for an orientation and support for unincorporated subarea success. Any thoughts here?
Yeah, I do have one thing on, the second to last thing, just thing what we, that Paul touched on about the Milwaukee with their IGA rights. I don't know if that should be explained or if it's good to go and people will know what it's talking about. Or, and I'm assuming some people may not know what IGA stands for either.
Okay, so I'll just insert a comment here to review.
I don't know if that needs to be referenced where they can look at what the IGA is or.
Okay. Any other thoughts in this section? And Lori, I'm scrolling slowly so you can see it too, if you're reading it on my, on the screen. Okay. So moving along to the task force mission, the one thing I had here was that we, our name of our committee is the Committee for Community Involvement. And then I will leave it up to you guys.
That was the only one I had spotted on that page.
Okay. Okay. So this is the recommendation for the selection process. This is when we start getting into the meat of their recommendation. And so we can walk through each of these and talk about, you can talk about it. It's not just editing if there is, when you want to think through the process because you're all are familiar with how you were selected to be on an advisory board and you can speak to your experience and, and your expertise as the Committee for Community Engagement. So what, the application and outreach process, is there any thoughts or questions, comments here?
I, I do have a question in terms of application and outreach. Will this outreach slash applications be, have other languages other than English? In terms of trying to bring in more, more people of diversity?
So it's my understanding that this is one of the areas that staff will support. And currently, Barb PGA coordinates and supports outreach and engagement, or outreach and recruitment for applications for advisory boards. And we don't currently have a consistent process to provide that in multiple languages. But we are working on and with our strategic plan, looking through our community engagement program through an equity lens. And that is a specific area that we are looking at, is not just with advisory boards, but with all of our communications and engagement. And that, um, is a specific area that we are looking at, is not just with advisory boards, but, but with all of our communications and engagement, is how do we more consistently provide language support to our communities? So, um, I would say that it does not currently, we do not currently have a consistent way that we do that. Um, but it is something that the county is looking and how to adopt a best practices kind of guide, um, to use countywide. So we're more consistent in how we serve all of our communities and, and all of our, um, community members regardless of what language they are proficient in speaking. Thanks. Yeah.
I just noticed that where it refers to, uh, that district, district-wide emails, I sure wish we could come up with a way of getting information specifically to the people who don't have emails. I mean, like, I know that, this just brought it to my mind. I don't think we need to change anything in the document. But I know I have like four or five neighbors who, when something comes to me as an email, I print it and take it to them because they want to know stuff, but they don't have email. And I don't think I have the only neighbors that are that way.
You don't, Jerry, and, um, that is one of the limitations in what we, how we contact people currently. We don't have a clear way to collect an email address for everyone, even people that do email regularly. You know, I understand what you're saying is there's some folks that just don't, either don't have access to the internet, or they aren't comfortable on email. And so they don't use email as a regular tool. But we at the county, um, when we do direct mail, we, we have mailing lists for all the properties in the county, thanks to the tax assessor. Um, but we don't currently have a really good tool to gather, um, email addresses. We, we collect them, people can opt in to our programs and we certainly store all of that data and use those email lists as best as we can. But we don't have, um, an email address, you know, for every constituent in the, in the Parks District or countywide. So it is an area that, um, we are continuously looking on how we can do a better job and looking at tools as they come out. It's consistently evolving, but we don't really have a, a clean way to make sure that we have an email address for everyone. Susan?
It's unfortunate, but I think it's a fact that for anyone to take on these responsibilities, they would have to be, they would have to have email. They would, I don't know how else you, you could engage at this level unless you could connect easily with, with others. Even though it does note here that each sub-area may require a slightly different strategy, um, which causes me to, uh, what are the bound, roughly, the boundaries of the NCPRD area?
Um, I would, I could pull up a map for you, um, but it, um, is the unincorporated area, um. Let me just pull up a map for you, rather than me try to explain it. Hold on just a sec. I'm going to stop, share really quick. Um, and pull up a Parks District map.
There's a spot on the document, uh, where you can click on it. The last.
Is it a hyperlink?
Yeah, which is a little interesting to work through.
Okay, let me find it.
Yeah, I think I didn't do that for some, I don't know what stalled me.
Rick, can you tell me where the hyperlink is so I can find it quickly?
Let me, oh, what was on the document? Uh, if you scroll down, oh geez, where'd it go?
It might be, I, I think I remember now.
BIS link. It says app identify sub-area designation, fixed on address. It's that first one.
So this map, this map, um, is what we, um. Yeah, yes, worked on this to allow a tool for folks to be able to easily assess where they are in the, um, area, in the district.
And I'd have a question either for, uh, Commissioner Savas or even maybe over of, if you look at the border between Milwaukee and, and SubArea 4, there are just little islands everywhere in, in that. So I'm just kind of curious how, if there are some green areas and yellow areas where people are skipped over and it just seemed a little strange to me to see how that came up, but there might be a reason why it happened.
I'm going to see if, I'm having trouble loading that, so I was going to see if there was a simpler map I could pull up just to show you guys the district boundaries. Are you in the district? This looks like it might be a good spot to look. Here we go. So you can see that, um. I wonder if I can, I don't think I can zoom in any further. Can you see, this is I-205. Um, and then this is the Willamette River, just to orient yourself, Clackamas River. So you can see it's the Oak Grove area, Jennings Lodge. Um, I think there's a teeny tiny portion there that, um, might be some of Gladstone, maybe. Um, it no longer includes Happy Valley, the city of Happy Valley, but it does include the unincorporated areas, um, around in between Happy Valley and I-205. Um, the city of Milwaukee.
So it doesn't show you District 1, 2, 3, and 4?
Them, this, oh, maybe this map came up. I still, I'm sorry, my computer isn't wanting to pull up the new map. Um. But, uh, this map does not have the districts broken out, no, or the, the new sub areas.
So Sunnyside in that area, SubArea 3, Oak Grove is SubArea 2, um, Milwaukee is SubArea 5. Uh, towards Gladstone is SubArea 1. Since I was able to pull up that other map.
Yeah, the hyperlink document works and, and you can call up and it does delineate what Rick is referring to.
Okay, I'm sorry, my computer isn't wanting to do it, but if you, if you all can click on the link and see it, you're welcome to do that too.
Yeah.
Or, and, and Rick, you can share your screen if you want to show us, um, the map you're looking at.
Okay.
At the bottom, there's a green button that says share your screen.
Oops.
Right in the very center at the bottom.
Host disabled person. Oh, you already did that. Well.
At the bottom, right in the middle, says share screen with an arrow. And then you can choose which screen you want to share. So you don't have to show us everything you've been looking at today.
Well, that seemed to have disappeared on me.
Shopping list.
Oh, there it is. Okay.
Okay.
No, I got, it says host disabled, then screen sharing.
Here you go.
So, okay.
I am going to give you the power.
Ooh.
There you go.
You're the co-host now. Hey, on this scene. Well, there's the map, but it's still not. Try it again. Oh, there we go. Shift the multiple windows. I don't want to do that. There we go.
There you go.
Perfect.
That is helpful, yes.
And I could probably shrink it down so you could see it, but as you shrink it down, then SubArea 4 goes away in that, so I'm going to bring it up.
So this is really helpful. This is the tool that, uh, staff worked with the volunteers on to make it really easy to identify where in the district you are. And so this will be helpful in the process if folks, um, if we move forward, if the board approves this process, to be able to figure out which group, um, they should be in and, and who they would be, um, choosing a representative for.
And this area right up here, those, that was the area I was looking at. It looked like an old bombing run or something. And so there's some that are in SubArea 4, some are 3, and, and then there's places like this in SubArea 2, and I don't know if that's geographical. Or, I was just kind of curious why, um, it's kind of like the congressional area where they say, oh, well, this area is really strong this way, so we want to do that.
Well, the, the issue with the border around Milwaukee, Rick, is that, um, it gets, where it gets funny like that is because of annexations. The county doesn't have, um, you know, we don't have, we don't have any control over someone annexing into a city. So that's when you see the borders change like that. That's why, um. I know in the negotiation and Laura, I think Laura Zentner is here, um, in the, um, exit of Happy Valley, the Happy Valley borders are locked in now. Even if folks annex into the city, they still maintain, um, their, um, membership in the Parks District, um, but I don't know if that is, um, if that applies to the Milwaukee border as well. Like, we could ask Laura if she is here, if she's able to.
Um, you want me to go ahead and stop sharing, or?
Sure. Laura, are you here? Can you clarify, is that true for the Milwaukee border also?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Um, so, at the, we had the lawsuit with the city of Happy Valley, and at the time that they exited, it locked the border for North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. So, um, tell me what you're specifically asking, is it that where it's all jagged?
Yeah, where it, well, where it's jagged along the city of Milwaukee, when people annex in to the city, will that change the sub-area that they're in then? Rick is wanting to know.
City of Milwaukee will, which includes, I think their, theirs is going to stay, if they annex, then that will become part of the city of Milwaukee.
Okay, so if someone was currently on that map, if they were in the sub-area, in the unincorporated area, and they annexed into the city of Milwaukee, they would transition into the sub-area.
Correct.
They would be in, in SubArea 5 in city Milwaukee then.
Correct.
Okay, just clarifying for Rick. Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
Okay, does that answer your question, Rick?
Yep, that's good.
Okay.
It just, it was just so spotty, I wasn't understanding the annexing.
Okay, so back to our document. Um, I'll go back up to where we were at. We were here. Um, so these, I thought that the committee did a great job of identifying some of the, um, community-based organizations that could be helpful in spreading the word about, uh, the DAC outreach. Um, is there any, any thoughts in this section?
Would high, would schools like high schools be inappropriate to get perhaps some younger people that might be interested? Or is, I, I don't know if that's some, something that's feasible.
So we do have growing relationships with the schools.
They could must be 18 to, um, to hold one of these positions, which sort of limits the input from the schools other than, uh, maybe the community college.
And we also do know that reaching out through schools is a great way to reach families too. So you could, it could be an opportunity that we maybe aren't targeting the student at the school, but we're targeting the parents at the school.
Yeah.
That is an opportunity we could look into.
And it also says in there about neighborhood, uh, groups such as youth and adult sports teams. And I'm assuming maybe like at the swim park too.
Yeah, um, when we have done recruitments in the past to support, uh, NCPRD, that one of the many luxuries being a district is for services like that, they collect email addresses and contact information for people who access those sports teams and services, so they are able to specifically target that audience, which is, is a really helpful tool for recruiting for this type of opportunity.
What about health clubs and gyms, assuming they ever reopen normally?
Okay. So here we get into the notification process and outreach for the vacancies. Um. Any thoughts here?
I'm a little, I, I was, it could come clear to me, but as I was going through this earlier, much of this document is addressed to forming the, the first board, the, the first deck. From which you don't have vacancies just yet. Um. It, um. Since this step has been taken, already been taken by the county, does that mean that notice has gone out of openings?
So, so, um, backing up, when, um, there, so we started a recruitment process, um, to fill vacancies, fill the vacancies on the, um, advisory board before the bylaws were completed. Um, and it was decided by the board of, or the NCPRD board that we should, um, complete the bylaws with the existing advisory board members. And, um, but hold those applications for the folks that expressed interest to be on the new board. So we have applicants. Um, and, but all of those were collected before the sub-areas were created. Um, it does so happen that we do have applicants from all the sub-areas. But, um, some pools are bigger than others, so there may be an interest, you know, to go out and do additional recruitment so that we can ensure there are candidate, enough candidates from each sub-area to make a strong selection. Uh, but we did get a good turnout for that initial recruitment. And so, um, that's what they're speaking to, is that we have already done some of that work.
Yeah, gathered from Commissioner's comments, that they had a pretty good response, but I didn't, I wasn't sure whether that was formal or, um.
Yeah, we went through the same process, Susan, we do for all advisory boards and then some. Um, you know, we, we recruited via social media, we put it out as a press release, it's been posted on the county website and the NCPRD website. Uh, we put it out to, to all of our email lists, um, you know, some listservs, and, and we did get quite a bit of interest, so that was really promising.
Well, this address. Going forward, someone choosing to step away, and so then you have a vacant spot. Do you wait? Uh, do you immediately try to fill it, or do you wait, you know, whatever, a certain amount of time, or?
There is a section in here, when I read through the, um, down, down the document a little ways, um.
Run down under nominating process.
Nominating process.
Yeah, number four, I think.
There it is.
Fourth.
Special elections for partially expired terms may be held, or alternates may be appointed.
And that's one where I don't know if we need to say anything or not, but they certainly need to, in their bywa, bylaws, get the details of that. You don't leave something like that open, or you'll have a fight like they had up on the mountain.
I think the one thing that I had to say about that, um,
I think the one thing that I have to say about that, um, if if if. This would go into their bylaws that. You know, all of those elections should be staggered, so not everybody leaves at one time. Or they don't.
Yeah, that has been. Staff has helped create a staggered term. Plan so that that is accomplishment.
And a normal term is four years, is that right?
Yes, but again, like Brent explained, the the first ones are going to be. A little different to ensure that we have that staggered and. The NCP RD team that put that together ensured that there, they really wanted to make sure that each sub area that. There was a kind of a legacy person that stayed on so that there could be some mentorship and support to each other. Um, so Jerry, I put a comment here just to confirm that the bylaws have adequate detail about. The special election or um alternate process to make sure that we're consistent. There any other comments here? So here we get into kind of their process they're recommending for the actual. Meetings. Um, so this is where they're, uh, the the task force recommends an initial meeting. Um, that's more educational to help folks and orient themselves with the process and get to know. What? Uh, they have with the, uh, what they will be participating in and ask questions. There any comments here?
Katie, I'm assuming there's no requirement that you have to attend X amount of meetings in order to vote.
Um, it says here that. The two, their two meetings are planned for the startup and sub area governance. The first meeting is required to inform residents and to encourage participation in the nomination process. To be carried out at meeting two, so they are recommending that the first meeting be a requirement in order to participate in. Voting at the second committee or the, excuse me, the second meeting. Are you having thoughts about that, Mr. Cook?
Well, it's kind of what we ran into with our CPO where we said you had to at least attend a meeting before you could vote. And I just don't know if people are going to say, ew, I didn't know I couldn't vote if I didn't go to the first meeting, so. Now I I missed it and I can't vote. I don't know.
You know, in our CPO, it's. They need to have. Attended a meeting in the year, not not necessarily.
I think that's what ours was also.
Yeah, we have some CPOs that have attendance requirements and some that don't. Do you have a suggestion, Rick, on what? You would, what would be preferable to you, um, rather than it be a two meeting sequence? I think what they're trying to accomplish here is to make sure folks have the information they need to participate. Is there a different way? That you would suggest?
Well, either they attend or go through. The documents or sign off on something that they understand what their, you know. I I think we've struggled a little bit with making people. Attend before you can vote, because if somebody just comes in and said, geez, are you going to have another meeting where I can? Before the vote is going to happen?
Gotcha. So you're suggesting maybe there be like materials that could be made available to people so that they could review those on their own?
I I guess it's kind of like the training that the all new boards do that said before you can vote, you got to be trained, you know, and.
So we could like a PowerPoint, you're suggesting like a PowerPoint or a video of some sort. That's that they could do on their own time, so they don't have to participate in a meeting.
I just would hate to eliminate somebody from, you know, if if we're trying to get people to be participants, I'll say, oh geez. I didn't know about that first meeting, so now I can't vote or.
I'm conflicted on that, I in in the, in the case of this first board. You know, I I think really people really need to. Be in the, well, I was gonna say in the room together, but we get it. Shouldn't. Understand what they're undertaking and who they're working with and, you know, what what the problem I. I think asking people to attend to initial meetings is not a real big deal. I think if you're.
Okay.
You're willing to take on the job, that's, you know, that's a small part of the obligation.
Okay, so we kind of have mixed review here.
Yeah, sorry.
No, it's okay, that's that, it's completely okay, there's, I don't know that we need to have a complete consensus of, you know, all these comments are helpful. And will help inform the next steps.
This might be getting in the weeds and, or it might be stated in the bylaws, but in terms of attendance. These are monthly meetings and so you have someone who maybe is missing. Three, four, five meetings. Is there any process where you you have to attend a certain number of meetings out of the twelve? Or if you have more than three unexcused and by unexcused, I mean, just letting the chair know that. You know, I I can't make it, I'm sick or I'm out of town. Is that, am I getting into the weeds here?
Um, I don't think you're getting into the weeds, but I don't have the bylaws, I should have had them ready, but we do have some. Community experts here that could probably tell us.
Commissioner Savis just texted that's addressed in the bylaws.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, Commissioner Savis.
Thanks.
That's really help, I I thought I remembered that being in there, but I didn't want to speak out of turn.
Thank you.
Most of our advisory board bylaws do have some. Mechanism to main, to ensure that there's adequate attendance from volunteers.
Thanks.
One of the things we're going to have to look at though with our bylaws is now that we're doing virtual meetings, if that continues, how do do we need to? Address that and bylaws, that will be interesting. Okay. Um, so then we move into um meeting two, the meeting two recommended agenda. Um, this is to welcome participants to the joint session. Go over the process together and then they're recommending breakout groups, which I don't know if any of you have participated in a meeting. Where there's breakout groups, but within Zoom, we can set up breakout rooms so that. Um, and what how they would do it here is each sub area would have its own breakout room, so each sub area would break away. And have their own discussion and process. And that all is facilitated using the virtual Zoom tools in this capacity down the road. You could do that in real rooms someday. But they're recommending here that we use the breakout rooms it within Zoom. Are there any thoughts here? And this is an area where, uh, of course, staff would help support to ensure that the technology is set up properly and. And and executed well, so that's an area where staff would support.
I do have a question, it's a breakout with facilitators. Now facilitator, is that someone in the? Uh, group, another member or who are, who would a facilitator be?
I'm going to ask Grover to confirm, because when we initially talked about this, it was community members, but I don't want to speak for him. Grover, are you there?
Yes, my mic working tonight?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Grover for all you who don't know me and I'm active in the Jennings Lodge area, I've been on the CPO board there for a good while. So thank you for your time in going through all this. The um, the specifics. That I wanted to make sure everybody understood is that. The the district advisory committee has its own bylaws fully. Formed and have been approved by both the Board of County Commissioners as well as the city of Milwaukee through their intergovernmental agreement. Requirement and what we're doing in all this piece is is putting together the. But they were, we were asked to put together equitable structure for selecting the original batch. And also creating existing forums for the ongoing communication, so that's what this document is addressing, not bylaws, not. Formation, et cetera. So now that I've said that, what was the original question that you asked me to ask?
Oh, um, the facilitators in the breakout.
Very good.
Um, are those community members or are you recommending staff?
They are, we have, we have very fulfill, uh, we we also went through design to look at what that would look at and we put together agendas for those meetings. And all the facilitator is is to case the group wanders off into the weeds too far is. To reminder, this is what we said we'd get done and so can bring them back, but it's not facilitators to strictly call on people, et cetera. And we already have a a band of folks uh who are fully trained and they happen to be community volunteers who are willing to help with that.
Okay.
Thanks, Grover.
You betcha.
Okay, does that help you, Barb?
Yeah, perfect, thank you.
Okay. So the next steps then after this second meeting would be to submit. Uh, those recommendations to the board because of course advisory board members are. Always appointed final, the final appointment is um something that the board approves. So that is consistent with all of our advisory boards. Okay, so the next section is the creation and maintenance of. Ongoing sub area forums and neighborhood parks and advisory boards, and before we dive in, I just want to do. A little time check, we've been at it for a little over an hour, does anyone need a break or are we good to keep going?
I'm good.
Okay. Okay, just making sure. Um, so the first section is ongoing sub area two way communication. Um, and. Are there any thoughts here on? I thought it was great that they really talk about the need for consistent communication, are there any thoughts here?
In the second paragraph there at the end, it says board meetings employing consensus or majority rule options. I always get concerned when I see a question like that where at the time of the discussion. Is not necessarily the time to decide how. You make your decision. The point where half of the people will say, I want to do it employing consensus, the other half will say, I want to use majority rule option.
Oh, so I see what you're saying. Grover has his hand raised, I'm going to ask him, maybe he can clarify what they mean here. Hello, Mr. Bornfeld, are you there?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay.
So I just thanks for your question, Jerry, that was an excellent question and we wrestled with it as well. Given the scope of and the limited amount of time we had to work on this, we we weren't uh named until the seventh of January and our deadline was. Uh, January thirty first, so we've created this entire document in that time, but to answer your question in specific. Our intent, as Commissioner Savis said at the beginning, with is to. To grow from non-existent reality, the idea of having neighborhood park advisory boards in the future. But that was not our mandate, it was to aspire to that, to move to that, so much of the outreach is to keep building momentum. Towards that and when those are eventually in place, they will have bylaws and that question will get answered well in advance of that, so this is. If you look at it between now and when that's a reality, they will be neighborhood communities committees or friends of or. The garden club or any, any folks who have interest in parks or sports, et cetera, are clearly welcome. And what we're addressing is out of the hundred and five thousand people in NCP RD. Eighty-three thousand of them live in unincorporated and I we've so pleased that the Board of County Commissioners were willing to mandate. That that it be addressed so that there was more proportional representation and so that's what this is doing and we're going to over time. Grow it, which is one of my favorite activities, is getting people involved, so I love the work you guys do, but that's also what I've been doing for. I did it professionally for twenty-five years and I'm now retired and I live here, so I hope that answered your question, but it was an excellent question. It will be decided and put in bylaws in the future, when and if those become blessed organizations. And until then, it's just communities working together.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Good question, any other thoughts in this section? So moving on, we, um, the document goes into tools for community outreach. These list a lot of. Community based organizations again and. The sub area DAC representatives will provide updates and announcements and will report on DAC meetings. Support may be needed from the county for Zoom meetings. Any thoughts here?
Katie, did we lose our CLACCO or so what do we call it? Now what, now what do we call it, it's not CLACCO anymore.
Oh, are you talking about the magazine?
Yeah, or in the.
Yeah, so we went from having the CLACCO quarterly. Newsletter that was more of like a newspaper forum, now it's called My CLACCO and it's a magazine. And in addition to that, we're working on. Kind of reimagining what the monthly e-newsletter looks like because the My CLACCO magazine doesn't go out quarterly anymore. It, we wanted to come up with a tool that allowed us to share more timely information, so we're working on an e-newsletter that will go out monthly.
Did you, did you say that that was going to, I think I've heard all this before, but didn't you say that it was going to come out, uh, hard copy biannually?
Yes, so the My CLACCO um magazine will come out twice a year. For now.
That seems like it's a good way to get information out, because it seems like it goes to every residence within Clackamas County.
It does, um, it's, uh, hard copies are mailed out to all the properties in the county. And so it is a great area to put information and stories and. And we are working on telling more humanistic stories and parks and recreation is a great area to talk about that, so. Um, are you suggesting that we list it here?
I would, I think that that's a great tool, they.
Okay.
Will get out to all the people.
Okay.
And I think the magazine itself should have a page that's kind of like want ads, only it's ads that. Organizations that have openings.
Okay.
Who's actually in charge of that, Katie? I mean, this is, these are good questions for further reference, actually.
Oh, uh, the My CLACCO publication is something that PGA, my department coordinates. Um, I think our account lead is Tonya, our Halotzky, she's our deputy director. Um, and we have a a team of. Of our staff that work together on that to kind of coordinate that effort, but they do reach out to all the departments and. Services in the county to ensure that it has information from all of the services and then it. It has sections that are currently specific, like the sheriff's department always has a specific section and. The Office of Sustainability, I think, has a defined section still in the publication that they contribute specifically for. But the, then there are, there's another kind of main section that is mostly to the discretion of PGA as far as. And what is the most timely and appropriate messaging based on the strategic goals of the county.
Thank you.
Yeah, and then I, I don't know what the process will be for the monthly e-newsletter, but we're hoping because of. The My CLACCO comes out every other year, it's not really intended to, or not, excuse me, not every other year, twice a year. It's not intended to necessarily be like your most up to date, you know, breaking news, it's meant to tell the story of what's happening in Clackamas County. And so I think we're hoping to use the monthly e-newsletter to kind of tell the more timely. And so I think we're hoping to use the monthly e-newsletter to kind of tell the more timely, um, kind of, um, breaking stories that are happening specific, you know, in that timeframe, um, and, and hoping that that will kind of fill that need.
Well, I think we.
So it might be a better tool for recruitment to use the e-newsletter.
Well, I think, I think part of the, the comments tonight were, and Jerry made that comment that, um, you know, you might not have everybody's email or might not, a lot of people, especially in the unincorporated, rurals might not get that.
Yes. That is true. Um, there's not a lot of rural folks in NCPRD though. But you're right, for recruitments for a lot of things for our other advisory boards, we want to be cognizant of that. That's why you always hear me plugging that. Would you like to sign up for emails from Clackamas County? Cause that's, that's part of what we're doing is we're building our email distribution list so that we have as many contacts as possible. And we do have a staff person who that's part of their job is to maintain those lists. Okay. Anything else here?
Yeah, Katie, real quick.
Sorry.
Is, do they have a budget to do outreach at all, or is that within their realm of existence when it comes to?
Who is they?
The board.
The advisory board?
Yeah, as, as to do outreach and stuff, the flyers or I, I was just thinking about, uh, the, Jane, uh, last month, Morrison?
Mm-hmm.
And Jennings Lodge, they had a list of things that they were thinking about doing. Um, and I just wondered if there, is there a budget to do anything with the parks and wrecks?
So each department has their own budget. I, I couldn't speak to what the NCPRD budget is for engagement. Um, but, um, each, and, and advisory boards, just as a whole, when we're talking about advisory boards, um, they are supported by the, financially by the department that they represent. So each department currently is handling that, uh, on their own and using their own discretion as to what their goals are for that. Um, and so there's not a one-size-fits-all plan on how they budget for engagement and outreach surrounding their advisory boards. Um, but it is something that, um, we often, when we are supporting departments with engaging or with recruitments or other work with their advisory boards, we do have to ask if there's budget because there is more opportunity to do outreach if there is um, dollars that can be spent to support that.
Well, I haven't looked at their website enough to know. I, I just noticed they have one, but it's, I, I noticed Grover had a hand raised too.
Yeah, I, um, I know we're in the budgeting process now, so it, um, I think it probably changes every year. And as you know, the county is in a, another tight budget year. Uh, hold on just a second, Grover. Are you there?
I am, and those are great questions. And Jane Morrison's a very good friend of mine and I'm on the same CPO board with her. What we've done here, uh, through her brilliance, given that she used to be the, um, contribution outreach person for the, uh, Humane Society, uh, is she, uh, we reached out to our local businesses and got sponsors. So we've been having an annual CPO picnic, uh, every year except this one because of the COVID. But in the previous years, and we had people who would sponsor, uh, somebody gave us all the utensils and the napkins and other people, this and that. And they were happy to do that and they got acknowledged at the meeting, et cetera. So we don't have a reliance on NCPRD or the county specifically for the outreach. It is the opportunity to keep building community. And so as an example from that, several of the local businesses have come to our CPO meetings as part of, they met us through the outreach to do that, and then they started becoming members and participating. So we're, we're hoping to grow community as opposed to, um, have the county have to sup- supplement our efforts. There, there really is a, a process of outreach and connection. Thank you.
Good stuff.
Thanks, Grover. Okay. Did that answer your question, Rick?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so we are, this is where we came to the map. And again, I didn't, I didn't share it very well, but Rick did. And the idea there is that that's an, an engagement tool to help familiarize people with which sub-area they live in and how they can get involved.
And just so you know, when I looked at that first time today, it, it was slow to load, I guess. And I don't know if that was my computer or not. But at first I thought, wow, this is really difficult to maneuver on. So I don't know if that, that's the first time I had used that thing. And I wasn't going to plug in an address to find out where I was at, but just trying to move around on it. And, um, they didn't, when I first opened it, uh, Area Four wasn't listed. They, it was yellow, but didn't have the sub-area, uh, title on it.
Okay, I'll make a note of that and, um, we'll check with, we'll run some tests. Cause I, as you just saw, I had some difficulty too. So I don't know if that's because I have a million things open on my computer or maybe I just have slow internet here at my home, but we'll do some testing because that makes sense to make sure it's, it's ready to, to go.
User-friendly.
Yes. Okay, any other comments here? Okay. So then that brings us to the attachments. And here we have a suggested job description for, um, the sub-area representatives on the district advisory committee. Their thoughts on this?
I think Katie, that, uh, we kind of discussed this once before under the, the member roles and responsibility. That's a, that's a frightful number of responsibilities. I didn't know if that was going to hinder anybody from uh, maybe joining. Or if that could be something that was learned during the process, but I suppose that they might've covered that in, um, bylaws as well. So I don't know if it's a deal breaker at this point.
Any other thoughts on that?
I concur with Brent. I think the member roles and responsibilities, just reading it looks, as I said, daunting. And so I, I, my concern would be that it might, someone who might be interested would look at that and go, wow, maybe I won't apply. So that would, you know, just be a consideration, maybe.
Do you, Barb, have any suggestions on how that we might make this more user-friendly or inclusive?
I think if you're just considering going on to a board, a line that says able to run meetings might scare you right off.
Okay.
I think, you know, a lot of these things are the, the things that you do on any committee that you, you know, that you sign up for and serve. But to have them, to have them listed does make them seem massive. Um, you know, you might say that, you know, um, members, um, members may be occasional, may occasionally be called upon to, um, perform other.
I can't alternate.
You know, to fill other needs such as, but, and man, this is really, it's, it's like a, it is a job description.
Yeah. Well, I, I just, one bullet, you know, speak publicly to promote and establish support for park services and programs. Well, not everyone is comfortable in, with speaking, but that wouldn't necessarily, I would think, uh, be that they would not be on the committee because there are a number of, I assume, other people who are comfortable speaking. So again, if I was not comfortable, I might look at that and go, ooh, I don't know. I, I'm not comfortable doing that. And that's just one, one thing that just struck me is because when it's listed as a role and responsibility, it looks like you will be responsible for speaking to promote and establish. And you may not be comfortable with public speaking, even though you may be very comfortable in promoting, but it may not be in the form of a public speaking, you know, you may tell your neighbors or whatever. So I, I think just what Brent and, and, uh, Susan said, that many of these things are things that you automatically do. But when you list them like that, it's, it's a little.
It's a little overwhelming.
Yeah, yeah.
So we, um, we just, so there's a public health advisory committee that just recently became an official advisory board. Um, and their, their group had some questions about roles and responsibilities. And our equity officer, our new equity officer met with them and, um, and me. And we kind of talked through some of their concerns as they're kind of storming and norming. And, um, they're an established group, but they hadn't been in advisory board. And so they were going through their process. And one of the things that they talked about was this being a more roles and responsibilities being something that they create as like a commitment with, as a group when they join. So they come together as a committee and discuss this and kind of lay it out. Um, so I don't know if that, I know we talked about, uh, earlier in the document that each sub-area might be a little bit different. So it might not be a one-size-fits-all, but, um, it might be something that could be a little bit looser so it could grow or shift as times change. And also within, to be within the needs of the volunteer. So it's not so overwhelming and daunting. So that, that's just something to think about. Um, I don't know. I know it's a little bit different, but it could be something that could work here is so it's not so overwhelming. It's something that everyone agrees to together.
I think if it was just changed the name of the heading a little bit, if it were a goal, goals and responsibility instead of roles and responsibility or roles and goals, or I mean, uh, it just, if you're looking at doing this, deciding whether you're going to do it or not, and you look down that list, you just very well could be scared off.
Okay.
Yeah, under the DC, uh, DAC membership roles and responsibilities might be, I guess, is that the way you would word that, Jerry? Might be attend, you know, and then the list.
Although you certainly want to specify that they attend the meetings, you know.
It's just that I'm rewriting the whole thing, you know, like, or maybe you could just change that heading.
I see what you're saying. That's, that could be helpful. Okay.
That way, when you, you know, one, one might fight for it, right? Then you might, might have.
Does Brent sound like a Borg to other people or is it just me? Okay.
Pretty bad.
Okay. Just checking. I think I gathered what you said.
I don't know, maybe his battery was running down or something.
Okay. Okay. Are there any other thoughts? I, I will do my best to gather those thoughts in a concise note. Um, and when I send this out to you, I'd really love you all to take specific looks at that because I think this is an area y'all had a little differing view. I want to make sure we capture that before we submit it. So I'll make a note of that and, um, but, and I, and I will also remind you when I send this out to please take a special look at those comments to make sure I captured what you were thinking.
I think, um, even a list that was half that long. Or, you know, maybe the same things would be written, uh, uh, maybe just to go through everything again. And, you know, me, that's one way to look at it too, besides the rest of the way.
Yeah, I think that's the difference between the commitment you make and the possible activities you might be called on, engage.
Okay. Um, so the last portion here is just the qualifications. Um, they all must, all, uh, volunteers must be residents of the unincorporated areas of the district. And they must be over the age of eighteen. So that sit well with everybody. Okay. And that, um, then they just had this dictionary of terms, which I think is so helpful because in government, we love our acronyms. Um, so this is really helpful just to make sure everyone is on the same page. Uh, that was one of the main reasons to, that I heard from the former district advisory board members to change to a district advisory committee was because it was confusing when we talked about boards. Um, trying to make things as simple as possible for folks to follow along.
I would include IGA in that list.
Okay. Any other terms that you think should be called out? Okay. I think that's great. Okay. So circling back now that you've, we've kind of gone through the whole thing. Is there any other comments? Um, before moving on, anything else that you want to make sure we capture? And also, um, if there is anything that you think about, I will be compiling these. I'd like to get this, um, back out to you by the end of the week. And, and then to, um, I, I'd love to turn it into county administration early next week. So, um, just understanding the timeline though. But if you do something, you think about something and you really want to make sure it's included, please email it to me as soon as possible. So I can include it in the comments and notes. Um.
I'll just spring it on you at the last minute.
Thanks, Susan. I love that. Um, are there, is there any other comments? Any, anything else that, now that we've been through the whole document, you think we should discuss?
Uh, I just want to mention along with everyone else, um, how impressed I am with all of the work that's gone into this.
Absolutely. Especially given the tight turnaround that these task force volunteers are, um, they did a lot of work. We did one meeting with them, with staff, uh, to, they're just as resources to help answer questions. Um, but other than that, they did all of this on their own. So it's, it's a great deal of work that they accomplished.
It's an impressive document. Good job.
Okay. So if you guys don't have any other comments, I'd love to open it up to public comment. If there's anything else from our audience tonight, is the committee comfortable with moving on? Okay. Are there any comments from our attendees? Anything additional you'd like to add to the meeting this evening? If you just raise your hand, then I'll know to invite you over to chat. That doesn't look like there's any questions or comments. Okay. Well, we are, um, done a little bit. I'm going to stop share because it's easier to see all your faces then. Um, I'll go over to say thank you. Um, it is, it, it was a lot of work. I do have to say it, knowing how much the information this group worked through, the task force worked through, it was a lot of work. Um, we are done working through the document. We don't have any public comment. Um, I don't want to hold you any longer than we have to. So this is kind of a last call for any last comments. But other than that, we've gone over our next steps. Rick?
Um, something is, we were talking about the roles and responsibilities. Just maybe if we put in there as a collective board, we will, uh, reach the goals and responsibilities as a collective group, something along that way, instead of individually. Because not everybody, each one of those, and maybe say as a collective, our goal is to reach or to fulfill these responsibilities.
So that they could support each other in that work, you mean?
As a collective group, as a, as a board, we will
Okay.
roles and responsibilities that we will hopefully accomplish or accomplish or work to accomplish. That way it maybe takes that bite of, oh my God, I have to do all of these things instead of, oh, I am with a collective group that's going to, you know, accomplish these rules and responsibilities or roles and responsibilities.
In other words, instead of saying the, are the member roles, it's the group roles or the, uh, whatever.
Role of the board is to, you know.
Roles and responsibilities.
Okay.
It's small, but you know.
Oh, yeah, I like that. That's, that is good, commissioner. I'm going to add that in the notes also.
You understood that?
I speak Borg, apparently. It's one of my many talents.
I'm waiting for it to say, are you my father? I'm waiting for it to say, are you my father? Or I am your father, I guess.
Seen that commercial.
Gary would have corrected me on that, I'm sure.
Okay, um, so last call for anything else? Okay, I want to thank you all for coming together. I want to thank our attendees for joining us. CC, I will be sending out the agenda to Jerry and we'll get the regular meeting materials out to you shortly. Thank you so much for taking the time to do this this evening. Thank you, Commissioner Savis, for joining us. And the task force members and county staff also that, that took the time and NCPRD staff that came to join the meeting tonight. Thank you so much. I will get to work compiling all of these notes and I'll get it out to you as soon as possible. Thanks again and everyone have a great night.
Thank you.